To get on.
Andy should be coming. I talked to him earlier today and he's, he was reminded of it tonight. So he said he would be there, be here. So he's showing up.
Yeah.
Councilman Williams. Yes, he, he did.
He's here.
Yep, he's on.
Uh, didn't even see him. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just gonna give one minute, just in case some folks are, you know, clicking around trying to figure it out because um, I don't want anybody to miss anything.
Hey guys.
How we doing there Free Bird?
Hi.
How's everybody been? How's everybody been?
You look totally younger.
I wasn't expecting to see you tonight. Exactly.
I have so much free time now, Tony. I just, I don't know what to do with myself.
Don't you have a whole list of honeydews?
I do. I haven't stopped moving since two weeks ago. It's, I'm not even close. I need some help. Come on over.
How, how many trips to Home Depot have you made?
Oh man, it's crazy. It's great. I can't afford not to be on council. It's too expensive. Anyway, keep up the good work, everybody.
Yeah, alright, thanks guys. Man, alright, so we will go ahead and start. Um, so at this point, uh, at uh, six oh two PM, we'll call our March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three Town Council Workshop, uh, to order. Um, a little, a little lay of the land here for this evening. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about the Lake Street Park, uh, our options and direction there for staff. Um, I do wanna let you know that Chief and Robert are um, at the Savvy Trial, um, and they will probably not be joining us, uh, for the meeting, at least not until later. Um, they uh, they send their regrets, but I think it's important that we support the staff and the family there. Um, so that takes priority this evening. Um, doesn't necessarily impact anything that we're gonna do here. Um, we, we have uh, we have ample and good leadership, uh, with, with Tanya, and I'm gonna call you Robert because your, your screen says Robert, so be careful, sir. So uh, Tanya's here, we'll be able to get a, uh, still get a lot done and have a very um, a good opportunity for public input, uh, as well as some direction towards staff on uh, the directions that we go. So at this time, if everyone will um, join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you, everyone. And I'm glad that everyone is here. So um, so we have a couple of options tonight. We have a presentation that Tanya's gonna give on the Lake Street Parks presentation. I think if council agrees, that is probably best and wise to um, go ahead and hear that presentation. Um, then we can allow for um, public comment and then council can uh, discuss from there. Uh, council, does that sound fair to everyone?
That sounds good, Mayor.
With me.
Yes. Alright, so seeing no objections. Tanya, we'll give you the floor.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good evening. We're going to be discussing potential options for Lake Street Park, given the constraints of the grant that both sections of this park received respectively in two thousand and three and two thousand and eight. And I'm not as good as Robert, so we'll just uh, you have to bear with me multitasking. So our agenda this evening, as we proceed, we're going to cover a brief introduction on the issue, discuss FDPE stance and position, review some layered options that still fit within DEP standards, and summarize the issues, and then we can open it up for discussion. So residents have been dealing with unacceptable behavioral issues at this park for some time. Town council and staff are very sympathetic to the issues that they've experienced. This issue is complex. Estate grants through the F FERDAP program were used to make improvements of the park. In order to determine what could be done and to find an equitable resolution, staff had a discussion with FDPE, who oversees the FERDAP grant program. During this conversation, FDPE legal counsel advised that the funds could not be returned. FDPE contends that the time the city received the grants reimbursement was not an option in either the rule or the grant contracts. Due to this, we need to explore layered options to address these impacts. So we're going to review the DEP discussion. Since we're unable to return the grant funds, town staff discussed with FDPE legal counsel what could be done to address the concerns of our residents and our council about this park. The park must allow public access. However, constraints can be imposed. Access can be restricted as long as there is a period when the public can enter. Hours and days of non-public or non-resident public use of the park can be restricted. They do not have to have everyday access. A certain day and hours can be selected for when they can have access to this area. A fee can also be charged for non-resident use. Acknowledgement forms can be used to enforce proper behavior within the park. And then staff has gathered costs to install gates and fencing, as well as access system at Lake Street and Lake Down parks. So the layered options that we've been looking at can assist in remedying the, these issues and include a fence, gate, and access system. And we could wait to see how effective that is at Fernwood. Additionally, we could charge a non-resident fee. We can get the designated swim area established, which Orange County EPD is working on, and they're keeping us updated on their process for that. Have a method to terminate access for bad behavior. We can also set a capacity in the park for the number of people that can be in it at one time. And we could remove the roof from the dock, which has also been an issue for safety reasons. So in summary, no solution will be perfect, and no option can completely eradicate the issues at this park. But layered options can make it harder for people to access the park, so fewer may attempt to go to the trouble. Using the layered approach, we're making it difficult for them to get in from the street side, and by establishing the designated swim area, it's harder for them to get in from the water side. An access system with the existing camera system allows us to see who entered and whose code was used if bad behaviors are witnessed. A fee allows us to recoup some revenue for repair and maintenance of the fence, gate system, and cameras. So this ends the brief presentation that we have in exploring the options. We would like to ask that council provide some direction on options to explore this evening and also open it up for resident comments. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Tanya. I appreciate that. Um, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and um, well, let me, let me do two things here. Let me quickly ask if council has any particular questions that we wanna answer before we go to public input, then we'll do all of the public input and make sure we get all of that input, and then we'll have a broader discussion. Um, so if you've got just specific questions about what was said in the presentation, so we can have clear mind as we get public input. Uh, I saw Mandy's hand up.
It was for a second. It was something that wasn't there that I had a question about, if it's something that we could explore as well. Um, having an, an SEO or possibly a park ranger, because um, I remember Chief saying something about enforcement was gonna be difficult. So I'm wondering if that's an option we can explore as well.
Okay.
I, I've added that to the list, Mandy, and I can check with the chief and deputy chief on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are the current, like, dimensions of the park? I don't know how far it goes. Like, I, I look down there now and I see how far they've kind of created the beach area, but if you're talking about like fencing it off, what are we talking about here? Is it what's already, what looks like already there? Does it run the whole shoreline or what?
Tom, I think we're, go ahead, go ahead, Tanya.
Sorry. So we're talking about two parks here, Tom, when you, when you look at this. You have Lake Street Park that's off of Fifth. So that's where that little beach area is and where the boat um, dock is with the roof structure. And then off of Fourth Street, we have Lake Down Park. So you have two accesses that can get to that area because of that walkway and path that goes between those two areas. So both Lake Down and Lake Street received this FERDAP grant funding as, as, as a project and as improvement. So we would have to address both of those, because if I just gate off um, access at Lake Street Park, people can just go over to Fourth Street and Lake Down and walk along the back and get there. So you'd probably wanna look at, at doing something at both of those parks to restrict access.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilperson Rose.
Yeah, um, so just so I'm clear on this, the issues with this park are people jumping off the roof, uh, excess noise, and drugs, right?
Yeah, my under, and also Molly, residents there have complained about the fact that people that actually fill up that beach area have been disrespectful to the, the people whose backyards back up to that area. Um, they've, they've complained of bad language, um, aggressive behavior towards the residents when they've asked for the noise to be reduced. Um, there's been barbecue grills placed on the residents' fences in that area and, and barbecuing and grilling kind of in the park, but against those residential fences that, that back up to the park. So um, it's just been a lot of rude um, and obnoxious behavior and, and very, very crowded. So much so that the residents feel like they can't enjoy the park because it's been overrun.
Okay, and the other issue is that it's, if I recall correctly, the police were um, sometimes, you know, giving trespassing notices or some kind of a notice or warning. But there has been no ticketing done, right? There's been no, you know, um, that other, maybe they've even escorted people out of there, but they haven't really been ticketing because they didn't want that image to be presented, correct?
So my understanding is, um, the police officers have actually been using the cameras pretty effectively, and when they hear that there's something going on, they'll, they'll look that up, they'll get down there, and they've trespassed a few people. Um, I'm so sorry, I don't have those numbers from PD, but I do know that they have, have been more effective in being able to go down there and address people, thanks to the cameras being there.
Okay, and the, oh.
Sorry. It's Robert. Hey, guys.
Hey, Robert.
Hey, sorry. Yeah, we just got out. Um, and I'm able to get in the car. Um, yeah, they, as far as enforcement, it's been mostly trespassing. Uh, the parks have technically been closed. Um, you know, as far as parking issues and whatnot. Um, but as far as citations, I think Mayor is gonna, or Chief is gonna jump on to, once he has a chance to jump on, maybe around six thirty. Um, but it's mostly been trespassing when, you know, there's, you know, people just becoming a nuisance, pretty much, and they've been trespassed for a year.
Yeah, and, and so, so also, how do you prevent people from coming from the water side or going around whatever fence that we put up? Because I can't stop them coming around my fence in my backyard, let alone um, somewhere there. So how, how do we, I mean, I don't see a way of actually screening it off, you know? I, 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 I just can't envision it. So somebody has a drawing or something, and I can't envision that it's only thirty thousand dollars in today's dollars to do that either. Um, but I think that removing the roof so that the town liability is minimized and maybe some of this parting is also reduced because they can't get up there and jump off of a roof, that, that seems pretty easy to me. That's all I got to say.
Okay.
Yeah, to answer uh, Councilwoman Rose's uh, question, no, we cannot stop them from, you know, utilizing the lakefront. We would have to use OCSO or FWC. Um, you know, we can only put the fence to the normal high water elevation and that's it.
Oh, oh, and one other thing. How do you stop, let, let's say I have a friend that wants to come. They're not allowed, or I gotta charge them, or, I mean, this does not seem doable to me. Sorry. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilperson Rose. Councilperson David.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify Mandy's uh, comment about an SEO. She's uh, talking about a uh, private security um, guard or a off-duty police officer, just, just.
I, I was thinking more of like, um, you know, it's somebody who um, has gone through some training that may be retired or something like that, that could write tickets for um, like parking violations and could help with directing traffic for big events that we have in town. Um, but not necessarily inactive, so we're not using up our active-duty police officers if, if, if that's clear. So I didn't know if park ranger was uh, better or, you know.
Yeah, we, we currently use um, the Butler Channel Lakes Advisory Board money for off-duty at Fernwood, but we also utilize it for patrols over at Lake Down and Lake Street. And they pay the overtime, but it's a matter of just being on the weekends, not, not a hundred percent time there.
Correct. Alright, Councilperson David, did you have any further questions? Your hand's still up, so I just wanted to check.
I'm good to go. Thanks, Mayor.
Alright, good. At this point, I wanna make sure that uh, we'll move over to uh, public comment, and then we will circle back for uh, deeper discussion after we uh, hear what um, what additional information we have available from the public. So at this point, if you would like to speak, uh, if you'll raise your hands, your virtual hands, um, I will do my best to call everybody in order. Um, and you know, if uh, that will give you everyone the opportunity to share for at least three minutes. Okay? Does anyone wanna raise their virtual hand at this point to have any comment on this? I know that this is a, this is an area that people feel strongly about, especially those that live uh, over close to that area. I know because we we get the opportunity to talk to folks. April, I see that's your real hand, but I'll take it. That works. If you'll just give us your full name and address, April. Thank you.
Yes, April Von Fonty, and we are at four one four East Fifth Avenue.
Right in front of the dock.
Right in front of the dock. And um, my question is, I, I heard and I was kind of happy to hear about the possibility of the roof being removed. Another suggestion was to have it switched to a metal roof, which um, the neighbor two doors down, Mike, works for a roofing company and said he could get, George, yeah. George said he could get that for a very, either no fee because he was willing to pay for it, or nominal fee. Um, but if they either changed it to metal or removed it, that would help with the, the children that are jumping off the roof. Um, I'm, I'm looking for more of a timeline, because you have the sidewalk there that it has um, been crumbled into the lake, and if we get into hurricane season before that's fixed, it's going to cause problems with the road. So my question is, what's your timeline?
So the timeline for this is a, a little bit to be determined, based upon the recommendations that we give to staff and the answers that they bring back. The, what you're seeing there with the, with the dock, which does have some damage from the storm, as well as the sidewalk. Um, we're documenting all those repairs and getting the FEMA projects written for them, so the federal government um, and FEMA will um, provide the, the funds necessary to rebuild those areas. So this could take a little bit of time. We don't have to wait until the actual funding is, is there, but we do need to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed before we take those out. So um, and Tanya can probably better address those as well. Um, and we'll give her that opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have, we've gotten quotes, we're getting quotes on that, but um, the FEMA representative did ask us to wait so they could actually come out and inspect those before we did any um, improvements, and that's important and critical, April, because FEMA has to approve this. And so we want them to see the damage and we want them to see how bad it was, and we don't want them to say later that our photographs were not good enough in, in showing that damage. So if they wanna come out and inspect it, what, what damage, I want them to do that.
For sure.
Did, um, well, to follow up on that question, did FEMA give you any kind of timeline of when they plan to come out?
Hopefully next week.
Okay, thank you.
But you have to, but you have to remember, they're working on the entire state. So.
We'll get there though with it, and I know, we don't wanna leave it that way very long. Um, but I do want to make sure that we get reimbursed for it. So we, we pay for that, and, and our citizens deserve to be reimbursed for those. And April, thank you for your input very, very much. And whoever the secret person is around the corner, we appreciate their input as well. Um, any additional input from anyone uh, on the call today? Lisa, go ahead.
Hi.
Full name and address as well. Thank you.
The Eastwood, um, and three two three East Fourth Avenue. So we're right by the parking that which Robert has blocked off, and it's been a lot better, because now eleven o'clock last Friday night, I had to call the police. Um, but we can move them straight away. The area at the back, the trail, but the signs have gone up now saying um, Lake Street Trail, and on the trail, it says you can swim and fish. So now, even though the park's closed, we find it's only four feet at the back of my house to the water's edge. I've got people hanging there all day now. Now, my definition of a trail is for riding your bike, walking dogs, not for people to congregate. So I just wanted to, somebody to clarify that. And plus, I think it'd be a great idea what they've said about just maintaining for residents, maybe at the weekends, then so residents can use it, because all the misdemeanors on Windermere people, I believe. And we have lots of nice people who walk the dogs down that trail who've come into the town, but most nights now, this, I can't sit on my back porch because of the smell of pop. So we have a no smoking on the trail and no music as well, because it is a peaceful place that people go for tranquility and relaxation and to listen to all that music. I mean, I'm sure the young people don't like our music, but you don't put it on other people. I know the Windermere Trail, they have no music and no smoking of any kind. Would that not benefit the town?
That certainly could. We're taking all, you know, we're taking everything that we hear, and we're gonna discuss all of those items. I made some notes as you were talking, and we also just passed a uh, passed an ordinance of uh, regarding smoking and vaping, or, or, or we're in, did we actually, yeah, we, we did actually pass that, just that I believe with the last being, right, Robert?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And maybe then instead of have, putting another sign up, because we've got so many, can we not have the new town, the new town signs with that all on? Just one sign that says, do not do this, you know? Cause everywhere you look out your windows now, there's, don't do this, don't do that, and it, it doesn't look like that. No, that's, that's me. Thank you very much.
No, no, I appreciate it, Lisa. That's it, that's exactly what happens when, you know, it's an unintentional consequence of adding things as we go.
Yeah.
And, and you're right, and it is, it does, there does come a time to consolidate all of that into one place, um, and hope that someone reads it. So that's uh, that will be, that will be our dream, but we're gonna try to come up with some solutions. I know this has been an ongoing issue and, and we wanna continue to work on it. Um, any additional inputs from the public?
Robert. I was just gonna say, there's still a lot of smoked cigars. Um, so it's not all smoking is prohibited. Uh, cigars was, or non-filtered cigarettes or non-filtered uh, tobacco products were uh, exempt from that, so.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to reconcile that in my head, but.
They, they have the better lobbyists. Alright, uh, Bill Martini, and then uh, Bonnie. Bill, you'll give us your full name and address.
Uh, Bill Martini, six twenty-seven Ridgewood Drive, Windermere, Florida, three four seven eight six. Uh, Tanya, you said that the um, there was a, this is a two-part grant, the FERDAP grant with two thousand and three and also two thousand and eight?
Yes, sir.
So we have a twenty-five-year commitment um, to maintain this park open to the public, according to the original guidelines that we got. So worst-case scenario, uh, we ride this out for five more years and then privatize it at, at two thousand twenty-eight, um, uh, when our commitment is up, according to the uh, compliance guidelines that FERDAP provided with the um, with the grant. So with, with that, and this is a rhetorical question at this point, but would that apply to the two thousand and three date or the two thousand and eight date? Might be something to look into. And Molly had uh, had, had asked about uh, the police um, enforcement, and I seen the recall that there was a statement made by uh, uh, Deputy Chief Bonk, that there was a hundred and thirty-eight calls for service in the year prior to our previous meeting. Uh, and that was before the park was closed, obviously, but a hundred and thirty-eight calls for service in one year is a lot. Um, there's a lot of police attention that happens there. Um, people have asked me, well, how you, you know, if you block this off, how are you gonna enforce it? And my answer is always the same. The, the police are there every day anyway, you know, and, and so uh, it, it's something that they do monitor regularly. If we put in, in um, controls to limit the access to people, yeah, I don't think the police presence is gonna be any more than it already has been. So um, so good job on every, everybody um, looking at all the different options. I think we, whatever we can do to limit the uh, distress to the, to the residents who live there, and not only that, but the ones who try to visit there and are not able to. And I'm sure Bonnie will um, expound on this. You know, people can't even take their kids down there. It's just a, it's just a nightmare uh, situation for everybody. So keep up the good job, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Bonnie.
Yes, my name is Bonnie Kellogg.
Thanks.
Pardon me?
Can you do your full name and address for us?
Okay, it's Bonnie Kellogg, four one six East Fifth Avenue, directly across the street from the park.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I, I've kind of enjoyed having the, the park on shutdown, but I, I'm ready to get back in the water, and um, my question is, do we have to wait for FEMA uh, FEMA's clearance before we can start cleaning up the park area, like the bench that's half submerged in the water, not on the dock, but the other bench? And the picnic table that's, and kids are jumping off of it, which is a hazard. Can we do some landscape works? There's the, the cypress trees or uh, the root system is infringing now and approaching in on the swim areas. Can we chop those out? Can we do some landscaping work over there? Um, and not touch the dock or the sidewalk or the seawall area?
Ms. Kellogg, everything that was damaged there is part of hurricane damage. So we need them to look at all of it, um, approve all of it as a project. So we're working as fast as we can to, to get those repaired, but we do not want the town to miss out on that reimbursement opportunity. So we want them to come and take a look at it. They've told us they're gonna come inspect it. We actually are going to propose a mitigation for that area. So a mitigation is a project that will improve that area. If I just put it back the way it was, we could end up in a situation like this again with the hurricane. So we actually already had the engineers drop some mitigation plans for that area, which we will then go through the process with FEMA on as well. So there's, there's a lot of work to that park um, at this point in time, and so where we've got it taped off. Um, I know that PD has, and, and Deputy Bonk have been working with me to, to drive by and make sure no one's getting on that um, so that we can limit interactions out there, but we really need to make sure that we'll be refunded, because it's gonna be an expensive project. So I do wanna make sure we.
They aren't damaged so bad that they can't be used. All I'm saying is relocate them, put the picnic table in the middle of that grassy area. That eliminates your soccer team that likes to come down. Um, pull the bench up and make it so the people can enjoy the view of the lake, bring it out of the shallow area that's in now, and then possibly shift that to the middle of the park area too. Those things aren't, aren't damaged. They just need to be repositioned.
Okay, we'll take a look at it and we'll, we'll uh, address what uh, needs to be addressed. Okay?
Alright, thank you, Bonnie. I appreciate it, Bonnie, and, and, and we will do that. What we'll do is we'll look at, um, if there's some life and safety issues down there that may be causing some, some concerns um, that people are jumping off of something or whatever, we can, we can ask that those be moved. Um, we'll document those sufficiently. It is a great place for a mitigation project. It's actually a perfect mitigation project.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a lot of great possibilities. Once trees get trimmed, roots get pulled out.
Well, I'm not, I don't know about roots and, and uh, cypress trees. I, I, I'm gonna have to refer to people smarter than uh, on that, but uh, but.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I would ask that we do, the other thing that I would ask that we do real quickly, when we get the opportunity, is since this park is gonna be closed for a period of time due to the, due to the damage and the safety issues there, that we can um, make the, the put up some, you know, different signage for being closed, and um, maybe kind of do something other than the yellow tape. Um, it kind of blows around and just, you know, just make it look a little nicer. We understand we've got an issue there that we need to deal with. Um, but it's a little.
I don't know what you can do, except.
Especially once FEMA's there.
Yeah, chain link fences is about the only thing that you haven't tried, because the green, I mean, the yellow tape and, and then the plywood across the dock walk, and then today the cone showed up. None of that is keeping people, myself included, out. And um, there's really no way of keeping people out unless you chain link it.
It is difficult, but we do have a, we do have an obligation to do our best to do that. Um, but you're right, we can't, we can't make people follow the rules. We can only
Right.
um, put them out there and, and apply them fairly and effectively.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, we're in the middle actually of a replanting um, permit with Orange County EPD relative to that area. So we're not allowed to actually pull shoreline plants or plant them without that permission from Orange County EPD. So we're actually working on that permit right now.
Perfect. I do want us to um, concentrate as much as we can though, on, as we, as we talk tonight, and we give our ideas for tonight. Um, if there are enhancements to that park, we can talk to Parks and Rec and go through that process, which is very, very effective. Um, tonight though, if we can do our best to focus on what do we um, Um, tonight, though, if we can do our best to focus on what do we um what do we want to talk about, consider and question uh in terms of what makes that park a more livable option uh for for those individuals that live close to the park as well as usable for the citizens that have funded it and paid for it. Um, and like all of our parks, we do our best to to keep them open to the public, but we want to have those areas respected and appreciated. And we certainly don't want to infringe on everyone's peace and quiet around those areas. So if we can talk about those issues tonight, because I think that's what we need to give staff direction on um and kind of format an approach to that. Kind of piggybacking off of one of the things that I asked was that Dorothy send out the the meeting minutes to council from our last discussion on this because we had a lot of good touch points. I think there have been some things that have been effective. There have been some things that have not been as effective as we'd like. We knew that was gonna happen. That's why we did it that way. So this is now the second tier of kind of, all right, what do we take that works? And then what do we want to improve upon? And where do we go from here? So those three things are gonna help us keep nice and focused um this evening. So um, April, did you wanna, did you wanna add another comment?
Yes, I was wondering, um, just wanted to follow up with again the timeline. Um, I know that you don't know if FEMA is gonna come out next week. But um, how will we receive updates? Because I'm kind of feeling like it's taken since September to get this far. So I'm feeling like there's no way I'm probably gonna be able to go to the park this summer. Um, are we talking about a year before this is all complete?
So it
No, I I already got quotes. I already got quotes, Mr. Mayor. And so once we get the the trigger from FEMA that they've done their inspection, I can move forward with those repairs.
And um, where the, is the roof part of the repair? Removing the roof part of the repair?
So the roof will not be part of the repair at this point because we haven't talked through that yet. So once we talk through that and council approves that, then that will get added to the list of things if council does approve that, that would be on kind of the solution page. So it's a, there's, there's, let's do, so just for clarification, there's two sides to this, right? So there's there's the FEMA side and the repair side of the park that that we and the mitigation to prevent damage in the future and damage to the roadways and the drainage in the future. There's that section and then there's kind of the town section um in terms of how do we want to to do our best to mitigate some of the challenges that have been occurring there um in terms of the the utilization and and overutilization sometimes of of that particular. So we're gonna try to keep them safe, safe and and separated so we can kind of know where we're going because it can get a little confusing for everybody as well.
Okay, well, I just want to say thank you very much. Um, we'll be heading out and let you continue your meeting, but um we do appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you very much again, April.
Thank you.
Good night. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, any further comments uh from uh the public? All right.
Just Bill, he's
Sorry, it's gonna take me a couple of meetings before I think of you as a You're like the, you're like the, like the sixth guy, right? You're like the sixth man.
I'm not supposed to be on here. Um, just, just a quick comment about the roof. Um, I I would, I would prefer that we leave the roof on there and hopefully that once the shenanigans are under control. You know, that that will no longer be an issue or maybe possibly keep that as a, you know, last ditch effort. Uh, if everything else does not work, but I think it's a, it's a really beneficial place for residents to sit and relax uh or could be. And so I think, I think we should wait until the bitter end to take the roof off of that structure because it really is a nice um uh place. And also, I don't know, Bonnie mentioned this. I was kind of not paying attention at uh for a couple of minutes, but the um, the entrance to the park or the gap in the uh picket fences or the 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 wood fence, it's pretty steep to get down there. And I know Bonnie had asked me to ask that that be repaired or corrected so that access was was uh capable for uh some older folks and uh just make it easier to step down in there. But I don't know if that got covered or not, but that that's something that we need to address, not necessarily you know, to make it ADA compatible because I don't even know if that's possible with a dirt uh um entrance there, but that that's something that needs some attention as well.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna, I I know that um, well, let me first check and make sure. Okay, is there, is there any additional uh public comment on this item for tonight? All right, see none. We're gonna close the public comment section of this evening's uh meeting. Um, and I am gonna kind of ask, I believe, what will be kind of a preemptive question of Chief Ogden. Um, I know he's uh traveling. Uh, Chief, are you able to to answer a few questions and give us a little guidance here?
Yeah, hopefully so. I'm, I am traveling. We just got done with the trial for today, so I'm listening in. So go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm gonna try, that's why I want to try to kind of minimize this a little bit, but could you because I I know this is gonna come up in a couple of different ways, I would suspect. Can you just talk us through again the enforceability and options that the police have in terms of enforceability um from both a a practical standpoint and from a legal standpoint. You know, I know sometimes legal is one thing, but the practicality of doing that is, you know, it's just not doable. So um, and you guys aren't left with a lot of gray area there. So if you could just kind of talk us through, I know we've had a little bit of conversation about this. What are our options in terms of of enforcement legality? Um, what are we maybe leaving on the table in terms of 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 options for officers? Um, you know, because we have to give them tools to enforce. They can't just go and enforce what they think should be enforced. We have to give them the proper tools.
Right. And I think the conversation kind of surrounded a little bit. Um uh, you know, maybe privatizing this and kind of having officers go in and you know, whatever it would be, check IDs and things of that nature. You know, it's, it it's difficult at best to do that, number one. I actually, I think number one is, you know, this country has spent the last several years actually actually formulating responses and uh to the opposite of of those kind of things. In other words, de-minimizing crimes. Uh, you know, what they call very minimal crimes uh encounters with with individuals. So that's always a concern. I I feel that our officers do a, an exceptional job at that. Um, but I, but I always have a caution, you know, when we, when we add um legal uh jargon or or muni codes that uh are just the de minimis crimes, you know, that are that that put our officers kind of in those ways to force those encounters and things of that nature. Not saying we don't do it, we won't do it. We certainly will always uh address those things, but that's always my number one concern uh with everything that's going on. Again, we we get along great with our community. Our community link gets along great with our our folks, but um, you know, when we're having something that's a a minor crime and and then enforcement action has to be taken, typically what happens is it 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 escalates very quickly into something else. And that that brings us on duly and unwanted attention, possible litigation in the future, things of that. And these are all just concerns we have and we're talking about just things that are just so minimal. Um, when I say minimal, you know, stopping somebody for, you know, um, to see if they're a resident or not a resident or or things of that nature. Obviously, we have crimes. You know, somebody's getting in a fight, smoking drugs, all those kind of things. Those are, those usually have a little bit more strength for us for for stopping, police officers stopping them, if that kind of makes sense.
Sure. No, I I I think it does. And that's what I want to try to just, you know, not to not that that sets the guidelines in which we proceed, right? But I want to make sure that people the council has a clear understanding of of what our choices are. Um, some of the the risk reward on some of those things. And also, you know, to, if if we move forward with different different choices and selections of products that we do something that uh tries to minimize those interactions and is not a gray area that it's, that it's very clear. You either have access or you do not. So there's not a lot of discussion. There's not a lot of um, a lot of gray area for, you know, left for the officer to get caught in the middle of trying to interpret. Um, I I don't, you know, I try to avoid those circumstances and these are, these are difficult in these particular scenarios. So um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what what we had option-wise um at our disposal in terms of enforcement. And I think it is, it is very fair to note that these are the exact types of things that people um and that the the state attorney's office is not wanted to deal with. So it makes it um, very challenging to enforce laws that no one else will enforce. So um, we appreciate our officers and and all they do and and trying to mitigate all of that and deal with all those challenges, but it certainly is the lay of the land as we sit here today. So we we have to kind of operate within those parameters as best we can when we talk about options so we don't put people in bad scenarios. Um, all right, good. Uh, did I say anything that was unfair there, Chief?
No, I think that was a great summary. Probably a little better than I did, but I think you expressed, expressed my sentiments there. And again, we are uh, I again, I I will reiterate that this town has always supported our folks and our folks have always supported the town. So uh, we, I think we understand what the mission is. We just uh want to make sure we have those legal parameters set.
How, what has it, what has the difference in workload for the park been since it's been closed versus prior for our officers? Can you give us just a little, not numbers, but just your your gut?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's definitely been a lot since it's been closed down, a lot less. So no doubt about that. Um, so yeah, that's, that that was an easy one. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm driving right now, but it's been a lot less. Yeah, when we can reduce that number, it's certainly gonna be better. Again, we're out there. Either way, we're gonna be out there one way or another. So I don't want anybody to think that we're not gonna be out there enforcing anything. We we, we're out there now. We're gonna I I you know, suspect we'll be out there in the future.
Yep, no doubt about it. All right, good. All right. So council at this point, what I want to do is open it up to all of us. Um you know, I know that we've had some time, uh, at least several of us have had some some time into this and time to think about it and and uh I I know Councilperson Stroop is new, but he's been intimately involved in this, knows knows and understands policing and lives next uh next door to a another very popular park where we've been able to try to 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 work to mitigate some of the challenges there. So I think that we can uh have a pretty robust conversation at this point and uh try to give some direction uh for staff as we move forward here. Councilperson Davit, I see your hand up, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I'm just wondering if staff has done any work to get uh pricing or quotes for the gate and fence area. Um, obviously, the um resources required to implement a uh solution is part of the consideration. So um, just wondering if that's been done.
I I did, Councilman Davit, when the Fernwood issue came up, Lake Street was also brought up, as was Lake Down on numerous occasions. So when I had them out here, I had them price out both of those as well.
Okay, what's the rough order of magnitude on that, Tanya?
Um, thirty thousand dollars altogether to do. Um, Lake Street was, I think, seventeen thousand and then um, Lake Down off of Fourth Street was a little less than that, seven thousand, something like that. So a total of about thirty thousand dollars when all said and done. Now, mind you, that was a few months ago when I got the quotes for Fernwood. So I'll have to see what what the environment has done to those costs, but.
And the layout of that quote is is what? Is it a similar fence to Fernwood along the face of Lake Street? And then where does it terminate down by the water line?
Yeah, so Lake Street would be um along the water line, along the the sidewalk. You would have to have two gates. You'd have to have a an access gate at the dock to get on the dock and then an access gate for the beach area. So you'd have two pedestrian gates in with access codes. Same code, but two access gates.
Right.
And then we'd have to, we'd have to work with Orange County EPD on how close we can get to the water with that fence.
Right. And that that's uh kind of leads into my second question. Have we discussed any of the swim area designation with uh with the county?
Yes, and and Robert's actually been very, very intimately involved with them on that. And they, and Liz over at EPD has been really great about keeping this updated. They're, they're trying to move forward with that process.
Um, but even with, just, just so we all understand, even with that cooperation, which has been significant, um, that is still a process that does take some time and I might say significant time.
Yeah, it took, it took a while, if we remember, to get the Bird Island designation and
Yeah.
Still doesn't have the the markers up yet.
Right. E- e- exactly. And this might be a little easier than that. Don't get me wrong, but I just want, you know, I just want to set realistic expectations. So um, so we're not setting people up to to think that, oh, this, that that swim designation will happen in ninety days because that is certainly not.
No.
I I would be, I would be very impressed if we were able to do it in it. If we were able to do it in a year, I'd be impressed. That that that's really more the magnitude that we're just, you know, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, and Mayor, the reason I ask both those questions is obviously one necessitates the other. If we're gonna do a swim designation,
I could cur.
Um, you know, we're, we're gonna need to put a fence up. And without the swim designation, the fence is proves to be just not effective.
I I I would um certainly tend to agree with that.
If I can interject real quick.
Oh, it's Robert. Sorry. Go ahead, Robert.
Uh, no, sorry. I finally made it home, so I'm in the office. Um, yeah, as far as the swim area, it's that's gonna be a tough, you know, uh, road uh in order to get the designation because of the um, stats that we have, you know, a lot of the other areas, you know, that FWC and OCSO have designated, they have a lot of um a lot of instances where, you know, it's, you know, jetski's collide, stuff like that, even though we have had deaths on um, that lake. Um, you know, we continue to advocate on trying to get that designated swim area, but it's still gonna be a tough tough road to get that that area passed. Um, but we'll keep trying uh as far as getting that, as far to get it designated for that certain area.
Yeah, I I think, you know, right. And that's all part of, I just want to manage expectations where we can do things and move the needle. I want to say that we can move the needle. Where we have to depend upon some others. Um, and that there could be some friction there, uh, you know, not because they don't want to help, but because the tools are are not always available and that it does take some time. I just want to be straightforward with folks so they you know, just have a super clear, transparent understanding of what we're all up against as we, as we try to help out.
Agreed and enforceability from FWC and OCSO and OCSO is the biggest thing. They don't want to implement something that people are going to expect them to enforce when they really don't have the manpower capabilities to enforce that specific area uh because because of the location.
Sure. Yep, understood. All right, um, Councilperson Stroop.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Uh, I just like to say, I like to take one of these like one at a time kind of thing here, but whoever came up with these options, I I love them. They did a great job with it. I think in light of the fact that we can't pay back the FERDAP grant, this is probably our next best option. So hats off to whoever came up with these, took the time to do it. But the uh, the gate and the fence area, I agree. Um, all, if we're gonna say this is a public park, which we are, then almost all public parks in the county with any sort of traffic at all are fenced off and they charge a fee and they're all closed at night. So I think for us, that's a big, big, big almost easy fix because if it's a public park, we, there's a lot of precedence there for us that not have to jump through too many hoops to make that happen, I wouldn't think. Um, so I'm a full supporter of that. The um, the pass, same thing there. If you put up the fence, of course, you need the either the access codes or a pass or, you know, have residents have the first option at the access. And then when we hit this designated capacity, then the what's left over is for people that don't live in town because it wouldn't be fair for the people that don't live in town to have to have all the access. And then when somebody from town decides they won't have access, the capacity is too high. So I think there needs to be a period where if we do put up a fence, which I think should be as soon as possible, especially based on the fact that we had a hundred and thirty-eight police calls there, which is way more than any place else in our entire city by far. I don't think we should ignore for very long. Then we should make sure the residents gets first shot at getting the passes before we open it up to the non-residents. So those are, I think those are both pretty really good ideas that could happen pretty quick based on whatever factors are involved there. The designation for the swim area, and we were all involved in the swim area designation for Bird Island. And one comment that the uh mayor made, which stuck with me, like, you know, sometimes some things will stick and some aren't as memorable, but he did say that he felt like it could help set a precedence for some of the other troubled areas in the county lakes. And at that time, he was specifically referring to Lake Conway, who was wanting to do some of the same things we did at Bird Island. So hopefully if that does set a precedence with the county, then it might make it a little easier road to uh go down if we try to do this for the same reasons, you know, obviously, safety. And also for um, you know, shore erosion or whatever else goes along with that. So that I think that's a ball we should start rolling, even if I think that's a ball we should start rolling, even if it does take a while. And we all know that does take a while. Um, the capacity is a good idea and also think that the metal roof is a great option. Um, I wouldn't be as, I wouldn't readily get on a metal roof as fast as I would a asphalt single roof just because it's too hot. So that might be just one thing to keep them off of it until we decide, like Bill said, later down the line, if we have to take it off. But a metal roof could be a. A viable option that could be done pretty quick. Um, but if we don't do, I know people don't like fences and gates and, and, you know, I've been told this by people who have come to me about things I believe and. They made comments like, well, you should have known that when you moved in there, or that's what you get for moving to Windermere or whatever. And the, the reality was, this was not a problem. You know, twenty-two years ago when I moved in. And it is something that even though we don't want to put up the fences, I don't think any one of us really do. I just do not have a fence anywhere in Windermere, but this is a problem we have to address now. And if we don't put up a fence and a gate. We'll have no parameters and nothing will change. No matter how many signs you put up. No matter how many spinning rollers you put on the end of the roof, if you don't put up a fence and a gate, they're going to sneak around it. We all know that. They're going to come in from the other side. But if you don't at least try that, then nothing's going to change. So I think we have to take a shot at that also. Uh, I know, you know, Dave and I were in law enforcement together for several years and. Yeah, I don't want to exasperate the public relations problem that we seem to be having with the public now as far as law enforcement goes. But this will also make it easier for law enforcement to enforce because then they have. Parameters, so to speak, literal parameters. Whereas you go down there now, somebody could challenge you just based on the fact there is no gate, there are no parameters, there are no signs. So. If we did decide to do some of these things pretty quick, you know, the fence and the lock-in at night, we have the precedence from the county parks. And would also give a little bit of teeth to it for the law enforcement. So if they did go down there, they would have something to at least enforce because like I said. A hundred and thirty-eight calls is probably about half as many times as people wanted to call realistically. And that's just not acceptable for, for a town like Windermere to have a hundred and thirty-eight calls in one location. And for us as town council, not to do something about it if we can. But whoever put this together, thank you very much. Those are my opinions and all those points. So, uh, I'll just sit back and listen to whatever else has to say.
Thank you, Councilperson Stroop. Councilperson Rose.
Yeah, um, am I correct in remembering that there was a swim area that, um. Was there for a while and then the county said that was illegal and we had to pull it out?
Yes, it was a non-permitted swim area. And the reason it came about was because a resident went to the. Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Committee to request an additional buoy. And then it became a target. And then we were under consent order to where we were going to be having to pay ten thousand dollars a day. Unless we removed the signage and the buoys. So, um, yes, we were required. Per Orange County Code, uh, enforcement, um, to remove that. Uh, because you need state county approval for that boat, uh, or the swim area.
Correct. And was it any better there be, when it swim area was there? I mean, were, were people happier? Was there?
It was not utilized to the, um, so, so there were issues with the swim area. Um, I believe the reason that the resident went. To, um, to get the extra buoy had something to do with the, the rope or chain was getting cut. Um, by, by boat propeller blades or, or braking. Um. But the park was not utilized nearly to the extent that it's been used in the last three years, I would say. Um, I think there's other people that can validate that. Um. It was, it was busy and used, but I think it was used kind of at the, about the right amount at that point. Um, it didn't have the popularity that it, that it achieved later on.
Okay, and I would also like then for somebody to get a price and if we, I, I, I totally don't think that there's a way to. To do what we'd love to do for these neighbors that are dealing with this issue, but. I'd sure like to know what the cost to the town will be if we have to put security guards up there. Um, I assume it would only have to be one or two days a week and only during the summer, but. Before we get into it, be, you know, and, and I just. A- a- and, and allow residents first before you make room for the others. So maybe that is a time issue that you say. Uh, oh, residents only before noon and afternoon, you're opening it up. I don't know. I, the, the. The management of this just looks like a nightmare to me. So. Everybody should go into it with their eyes open. Yes, it would be really nice, but we can't, I, I, I haven't seen much management. Successful along the lake yet.
It is, um, I would agree with Councilperson Rose that it's going to be challenging. And I think that it. As we think about this, it boohoo's the council and staff to. We have to think in pretty simplistic, uh, terms, uh, y- you know, in, in very clear terms, not a lot of, uh, ambiguity. Uh, because it's, it's a very, you know, we've got to make it simple if there's any hope of, of the enforceability factor working. But I do think that there are potential. Um, ways to limit and maybe make it a little less attractive. Um, and still, you know, live up to the letter of the law. Um, I think it'll probably come at a cost. It'll probably come at an inconvenience for residents as these things tend to do. Um. But I think that there, there certainly is possibility there. We just want to make sure we, let's get all the questions answered. Let's think about how we would do it. I like the, I think that there is something to setting the capacity and then allowing. Um, only a certain amount of, of passcodes out. Um, I think that that. Because, because when you think about the park itself and when you think about the folks who utilize the park, it is not. It, uh, I, I think, and I hope this is fair to say, that it is, it's often not. The fact that people are utilizing the park, it is the fact of the gross numbers of people utilizing the park. And then you've got competing. Competing sounds, competing, uh, parties, competing boats, competing soccer, competing parking. Um, I think that is where we run into the, the larger issues. Um, that the residents experience. I mean, I, I sat down there the other night. And the park was closed and I wanted to call the police at least once. So, um, you know, it's definitely. And, uh, it's definitely an issue. It's definitely an attraction. Um, and that is, that is, I think is what we're up against and, and how we deal with that will be the trick. And then here from Councilperson Williams. Any thoughts, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening, brother. How are you?
I'm just taking it all in.
Yeah, I figured, but maybe you can sum it up.
You know, I'm all in, you know, the list that, uh, staff came up with, with ideas is fabulous. You know, I think. You're right, we got to start thinking super simplistic. And know that we can only deter so much, you know, uh. There's always, if somebody wants in, there's a way in. It's just like the roof. We put up that roller. Can't get up there. Oh, yes, just watch. We can get up there, you know, I mean, if you tell somebody no, they're going to figure, figure it out away. Um, as for the metal roof. I think we need to look at that pretty cautious because. One, the expense, I'd like to actually see expense. I just know that metal roofs are. Uh, make shingle roofs look cheap, uh, when you start looking at costs, uh. It's at, it's crazy for what they want. Um, yeah, it may keep, keep some people off, but I'm wondering how many, uh. Sliced open legs and arms we're going to have with stitches first couple of people that do actually get up there. Um, I think fencing it and gating it, shutting it down at night, those are easy. And I like the passes. I like capacity is the other one, I think is, uh, I think gives us some, uh. Options to, uh, mitigate the amount of people in use. I think, I think it's, uh. You're just going to have to make it hard, which means it's going to be hard on residents though. But that's the only way to get it under control.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And yeah, that, that's a good summation, I think, too. Um, I, I did share your concern, uh, regarding the liability of. You know, intentionally putting up a, a, a roof that's difficult to climb on, um, when we know people climb on it. Uh, but we'll, obviously we'll run everything through legal to here. I've, I've added that to our list. Uh, to make sure that we don't get ourselves sideways unintentionally. Um, com, uh, uh, I just, uh, Councilperson Stroop, I saw your, uh, name go up. Your hand.
Nope, I'm sorry. Let me lower my hand. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. So let me then. Randy, I see your hand up. Give me a second here so I don't lose my train and then we'll. Then we'll go and make sure, we'll, we'll do another round just to make sure we don't leave anybody out input wise. So. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go over what I have here as our, as councils, uh, requests for staff. To investigate as we begin to kind of take the next step here. Um, they do align pretty much with the presentation. I think that is a, is a byproduct of. A, a, a lot of, uh, a, a lot of work as we've gone on here through the, this year. So. Prices for the fence and then fencing options and plan. Um, potentially with a termination at the water line, if that's legal. Um, or, and I'm sorry, not the water line, the high water mark, which actually.
High watermark.
Yeah, so the high water mark. Make sure we get our lingo here. Um, the possibility of the swim area. Um, regulation and designation. Then the exploration of a fee for non-residents slash pass. Uh, based on capacity and or hours and time. Then there, um, then the roof. So whether that is no roof, a metal roof. Um, or the existing roof. So those are our three options there. And, and potential cost, I, I heard, do we want to get cost on security guards? I know that's going to be. My, my concern with security guards are that if you have a security guard that doesn't have any power. It's kind of in my experience with these folks is they know that. And then that just results in another call to our officers anyways. Um, I don't know if Chief wants to, to, to offer any thoughts on that, but that is one of my concerns. You know, I feel like. I, I've seen how these folks have spoken to residents. I don't think they're going to speak very nicely to a security guard either, uh. Unless, unless they're, they're pretty, uh, pretty beefy. So that's just my concern. And then. Um, a legal review of all of this to make sure that we're in line, um, and we're checking all the boxes. Um, and this will sit sideways with our mitigation and FEMA, um, repairs of the park. Um, as well. Is that, does that take into account pretty much everything that we've discussed here this evening?
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay, we're not voting tonight. What we want to do though is we want to put. We want to put our thoughts together to make sure that we're addressing everything. Doesn't mean that these will be everything that comes through in the final. You know, council may look at the numbers and say that doesn't make sense. But what we want to do is make sure we look and explore it all the options. So we can give, uh, good decisions, uh, onto the next step for, for, for staff here. Councilperson David?
Yeah, Mayor, just one comment, you know.
Yes, sir.
Uh, while I agree with you that, you know, the security guard may or may not be effective, le- let's go ahead and get some pricing on that, just so. Have that, uh, that, uh, data point in our hip pocket.
Absolutely. And I just, I'm just worried that it'll be a big number, but I agree. Nothing, you know, doesn't, doesn't hurt to get a price, right? So we can do that. Um, and we may even try to piggyback, you know, maybe that brings up some other ideas that we haven't thought of. So.
I agree.
You just never know.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilperson, Councilperson Stroop?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Tony jogged my memory a little bit about something. I know we pay the off-duty officers or the, I guess, I think the state does or the. Wait, I don't know what the water basin, whoever pays those officers that have that boathouse down at Fernwood Park. Is that anything to do with Windermere? Or is that something to the state or through the county or what? Because I know they work off-duty down there because I know a lot of reserve officers at work.
So Tom, we have an off-duty detail on the weekends that is funded by the Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board and their FWC type funding. Um, don't quote me on all of that exactly, but that is how those officers are funded. They can be, they can do part of this. Um, I don't think. That, um, we, we've only been able to get that funded over like, I think the last probably eighteen months or so. Um, and that was through a lot of work, uh, from, from chief and everybody to make that happen. Um, and that's been really, really appreciated and made a big difference down at the boat ramp. Um. That is something that we wish to continue and will continue. I don't know, um, if there. I would say that I doubt there's opportunity to expand that. Um, but, you know, we could certainly potentially ask. Uh, but I. I, I think the big piece to that was that that boat ramp. Um, was really causing some safety issues. And I think that was our. Um, and, and enforceability issues, you know, there's a, wha- whatever we can stop on land was certainly benefiting those officers out. Um, uh, at the, at the island. I think that was the, the thought process there. Somebody can correct me if they'd like to, but I believe that was the impetus of that.
Um, Mayor, yeah, yeah, you're correct in that. It's been about, uh, I think a year and a half now. And, uh, we get seventeen grand a year to reinforce that. We, we do shoreline protection. So that's how we've kind of entered into that contract with them. Um, so those off-duty guys primarily will work Fernwood, um, also the Sixth Street Ramp. But they will go by, um, um, Lake Street as well. So again, we're kind of a, we have a, a minimal slot in that. And, um, nothing that says we can't ask for an increase each year, but we just kind of have to show that there was a need for that. So, yeah, that's something we've been doing. Just under two years now, and I think that's been helping. The whole perp, the whole, when I wrote that up to the county. Um, it was about shoreline protection. And just so you know, we, we do some extra training with all of our officers. So that they understand at the, uh, how to do some shoreline protection. So we've got some of that training coming up soon.
Great, Chief, and I appreciate you adding to, to, uh, adding a lot of accuracy to what I said. I was going by recollection, but, um, so yeah, certainly we can ask. Uh, but that, that gives us those options. I don't know how much more we could expand that potentially, Tom, but, you know, we'll do our darndest. Um, does that, did that kind of answer what you were thinking?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right. Counsel, any further comments, uh, on the direction thus far? I see Councilperson David.
Uh, just real quick question, uh, Mayor, and I'm kind of spitballing here. Um, wh- what are the thoughts of doing like a neighborhood watch? Or some other type of, you know, oversight versus, um. Paid security or off-duty police, um. To do that. Yeah, I, and I'm not sure, again, I'm spitballing. Um, any thoughts on that, Chief or, or Mayor?
So I think I'll, I'll certainly let Chief chime in, but I think that. So for certain things, I think that really does work. My concern with this is that the relationship has been, uh. Relationships between the residents there and those individuals, uh, that come in, those individuals that come and utilize that park. Um, has been a bit acrimonious and I, I, I get concerned and they have already had people threaten them. Um, you know, and so I get a little concerned about that interaction, uh, because it has not always been, uh. Super hospitable and, and, and very respectful. So, um, that would be my only concern.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm advocating, you know.
Yeah. Direct. A great idea, but I'm just like, ah, boy.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't know how the implementation would go, but you know, I just trying to up with.
I mean, I'll tell you what, Tony, I'll tell you what, and I'll just be real frank here. I'll tell you what people tell me that, that, that they don't even call sometimes. Because they don't want those folks down there knowing that they're calling. Those guys put two and two together and. Um, there have been, there, there have been threats and I've, I've witnessed some of it. I've seen video of some of it. Um, it, it's disappointing to say the least. Uh, it's about as nice as I can say what I think about it. Um, so. Um, but I think, uh, I'll, I'll let Chief, um, add his thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'm kind of a little way, uh, with you, Mayor. I'm a little leery of, of that sheriff's office we had. Believe it or not, we had the mon- mounted posse. They rode horses over there and, um. It, it really, at the end of the day, just kind of turned into more of a, a search and rescue team, which was good. Uh, when I was over there, I ran a, a two hundred and fifty man volunteer unit, all different kinds. So. That could be a potential, something I look at was actually creating a volunteer type unit. Uh, so for me, I, I, I would hesitate to get residents involved that way. I don't want to stick them in the middle of that equation. Um, I, I think that's a bad practice, uh, for all of us to be doing and getting into. Um, but, but there may be an opportunity for some kind of a volunteer unit that we create, um. That has some, uh, minimal authority to, you know, write parking tickets or, you know, check on the areas or something like that. Kind, kind of like a, uh. you know, check on the areas or something like that, kind of like a community service officer type thing or something like that. So that that's a program. So thanks for the council member mentioning that. That's a program maybe I could look into and do a little research. You know, if we had, you know, four or five people that wanted to volunteer for something like that, that could, that could potentially work.
Chief, that's something that I think I I certainly can't speak for the entire council, but I I know that I think that is something that if we were going to invest in, I would certainly be interested in following up with something like that. I think that there is a pretty good utilization and use for use model for for that type of force, especially if it's well done, you know. And I think that if there were dollars and cents that maybe we were going to pay out somewhere else that could could start something like that, I'd be interested in at least having that discussion and letting counsel weigh in on that. Counselperson David?
Thanks, Chief, by the way.
Yes. That's kind of what my first question was at the beginning is having something like that, because I know we have issues with Windermere Rec. We have issues with some of the other parks that if we had somebody patrolling constantly and dedicated for those areas, I think that would help minimize and and help the police officers not have to respond to so many calls. That that was kind of my thinking when I brought that up. But and I know I've been quiet. I'm not feeling all that great, but everything looks great to me. I do like, I do like an option of, and I believe Chief mentioned this in the last meeting that we had, I think, one of the meetings about we could even set days. I really think we need to set days that it's open to the public only and not necessarily times. I think it needs to be certain days and definitely not weekends so that the residents can enjoy, you know, their weekends. And that's all. I I agree with the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson David. Councilperson Stru, is your hand still up or you just forget to put it down, brother?
I'll get the hang of this in about June. But I'm lowering it now. Thank you.
It's all good. All right. Counsel, any further input? Just want to make sure. Robert, did I hear you say something?
Mayor, I was asking, was Tom's hand up because he was volunteering for a volunteer duty?
He was. He was looking to start our new park and community resource officer program with
Yes.
GM cars and golf carts and
Give me a golf cart and a pair of shorts.
Yes, sir, I think, and and flip flops. I'm with you, man. All right. Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate all of your input tonight. Brandy? I see your hand up there. I want to go ahead and give you the opportunity to share.
Yeah, I mean, Mandy actually just said one of the things I was thinking, and I have two others that kind of play on that. So like, yeah, if we could do, you know, a situation where residents only on, you know, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and other people can come on weekdays, then, you know, I think you eliminate, well, I don't know how many are locals, you know, that live in town that are doing the partying over there, but that might help with eliminating some of it. And then the other thing is, is if we do end up doing something like where there's a fence and there's passes. I mean, I assume everyone in town would be eligible for a pass, but could you restrict it to say, I don't know what the population is in town, but let's just say it's three thousand. Could we restrict the passes to non-residents to like two hundred and fifty or three hundred? Could we keep it really small? Or are we not allowed to limit it in that way? Then the other thing is just on the metal roof thing, because I know that lady said earlier that there was someone who has a company. You know, maybe they're going to do it for a good deal, but in general, metal roofing is not that expensive. I've priced it before. It was about a year now, but if you were buying it on your own, it's only like, depending on the kind of roof, it's that if it's the gallblum, and I don't know how they pronounce it, it's only like five dollars a linear foot. For and they're usually twenty nine inches wide. So even a quick look on Home Depot like a hundred or fourteen foot by the twenty nine inch or whatever is the standard width, thirty six inch, it's only a hundred bucks for one panel. So they're really inexpensive to do. It's it's really in the labor that they get you, and then it comes down to whether it's standing seam or the other. So metal roof would be really possible. And the other thing is I know people who do metalworking up north, and I don't know exactly what it's called, but they do do this sort of like rolled edge thing. It's like, for lack of a better description, it's like a hem on an outfit or a shirt. It's a small rolled edge that they can do on the edges of the the roofing so that it doesn't cause cuts. They kind of use it more in farms, but I don't know what it's called, but that might be something that could be put on the edges of the roof so that, you know, people aren't tearing up their legs if they're still stupid and get up there. I still thought people would, but the hot roof, that's a good point that I didn't think about because mostly I've had them up north. So that's just my two cents on the roofing stuff. But I I think a metal roof would be a good idea. I don't think taking the roof roof off is good. It is hot in Florida, and if people are using it, residents, you want that shade. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Brandy. We'll do, we'll do, we'll do black, black colored metal. That ought to get to about a thousand degrees.
Yeah, that's
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Tanya, any anything from your end?
No, I think I think we're good, Mr. Mayor. I think you've given us some direction to take a look at and and get moving on. A lot of things I just need to update the quotes on. So we'll come back to you all with with the results of that, and I appreciate everyone's input this evening.
All right. Robert, anything from your end, sir?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, anything additional?
No, sir. Thank you.
Counsel, anything for the good of the order? All right. Seeing none, I certainly appreciate everybody's input. I know these types of topics are are challenging because they're 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 the kind of things that, you know, you can't win for losing sometimes. So I I know they're challenging, but, you know, we want to make sure that we do everything that we possibly can to to eliminate some of of the challenges that down there, just like we've we've worked really hard to try to mitigate those challenges at the Fernwood Boat Ramp as well. So we'll just keep chugging along. I appreciate everybody's hard work on this and time and effort and as well as all of the public input. And at this time, it is seven seventeen PM, and we'll close our town council workshop. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks all.